If you are.
I'm.
Giving that full explosion ball, I don't know if I got the lead, but then how to be going back. Believe me, all right? Hold on.
No, no. Make sure I come over.
Oh, sorry.
I was waiting to give a line of United States of America. Is it really love enough for which stands while we mention a McDonald's, a missile, liberty, stress, sterile.
Watch you listen.
You want me to say?
Say it.
All right, sure. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for all that you've done for us and please help us get through this meeting. Uh, some of us have to go to UK game. And uh, help us make our decisions and make the right ones for this city. His name is Brandon.
Mayor Jones. President Meadows. President Coburn.
Mayor.
President Brown, here, President Harris. Thank you.
A chance to look over the over twenty minutes. My man just be for me.
Has everybody looked already October twenty eight?
Uh, I do, and I just have. A request if everybody's agree with it, like at the very back, we talked about, we talked about the towers. It says what the commission did. Um, since the commission had no disagreements on them setting up. I would just like to ask, like in public concerns, I mean, you mentioned the concern so in depth like that, we say what would be like. Like the first one, um, we referred them as a civil, it'd be a civil matter for them, the second one, the commission took no action. And then the last one, the commission deferred to the organizational that was doing the events. Just to, so somebody to think like later and say, well, you actually said this in the meeting, no, we didn't say that at all, you know? Just like in the tower tour, we said what we said to that question. Just like to ask if we can spit brains on those lines, just to say. What would you say the commission? That makes any sense at all?
Is that, you want that to be correct?
If you, if you're all okay with it, yeah. Yeah, but first, we just say, um. Um, and actually probably more appropriate, the attorney, um, said that this was a civil matter that the citizen would need to look into on his own. But uh, properly updated easements. Um, the next one, the commission took no action.
Can I actually add something else to this?
Yes, yes, please.
Um, so underneath public concerns, we say a citizen all the time, why, why do we have to name that person? Why couldn't it be a citizen asked if they could set up a Buffalo Square?
Say it again more time.
So underneath public concerns, like, and we had somebody come in here and talk about how we've shut now, front page. We just labeled them as a citizen.
Yeah.
But when we get back there to.
Yeah, and. I guess the tower tour, I mean, because they were asking permission to set up, I don't know. I know at one time we used to name everybody and then a lot of people would say, well, I'm not giving them either. You're gonna, well, ask me out there and put my name on it just because I came part of concern, so that's why.
So really, the only thing we have to report is the approval and the motions, right?
Yeah.
Names is not something that we need to leave with.
No, because.
No, because somebody may make their suggestion, which I, I would just definitely something I saw.
Is it okay that I change that to a citizen instead of the tower?
Hey, if you want to, yeah. Yeah, I think so, Joe. That falls in the same line as the first one.
That kind of public concerns, we just said citizen, citizen, citizen.
Yeah. And then that last one in the third page, since the commission deferred to the organization. Um. Due to not being a city event. The Christmas market.
Where was that?
That's on the front page of the public concerns, it's the third public.
I'll make a motion to accept the regular meaning, uh, minutes for October twenty eighth. Nothing. All of theirs.
You can't.
I'll make sure. And say, everybody except for mayor. Where are the other side?
Everybody look at the finances.
Not on the.
Yeah, I haven't seen them, but. So let me see the public switching over to the next one. Before we go with publics enough. Maybe you trust one.
And people start people.
Maybe you sign them.
The transfer has begun, I've just got to make sure that I have everything covered with CTV. Before I can fully transition. So it's, it's there, it's on.
So question on the runs for the, why are they all deleted then on food?
They're all time. It even gets to Melissa Super thirty to one ten three, ten five. Does it mean it's spent?
Was that can read argon paid and that was just a duplicate?
I don't know.
There was my question.
It's on page two.
No, it's on page one and it's on page two and it's on page three. So the month of October. I made them active so that I could pay them. And then I didn't run this report until November and at that point I had deleted or made them inactive.
Okay.
And it just says deleted because I printed, if I had printed it October thirty first, it probably wouldn't have said that.
Remember, remember, something about how they charged us.
That same money.
Uh, and it has helped, yeah. For sure.
What was your charge?
It was fifteen dollars per thing.
I know, that was when you get charged this month on the. Quick looks. Should be in there, right?
It's probably quick looks, yeah.
Oh, here it is. Oh, that's pretty big one.
Payroll shows five seventy four, seven fifteen.
Payroll. But it's not good. It's a new clear, it's a new charge. Oh, so it's seven three hundred and three.
So, yeah, it was around five hundred and it's seven hundred. But that was. For. That, oh yeah, that would have paid for all of this. Don't put me in that.
I do have one more question too, the, the banners, because we've seen it, is that just like the one was from where the check was written and this is just showing that it cleared? It's on page nine of mine.
From the banner. Very long.
It's like the very last one.
There should be, you know. The deposit with two thousand dollars.
And this is where it cleared, where actually we picked up the banners?
Well, I was thinking, and it should be at the deposit. Oh, it'd be fast, but that's what I'm gonna be sending.
The two thousand dollars in donations was not far, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I mean, I think that's, I think the two thousand in donations made, it was. It had to have been earlier than that because we've had them worked for a long time.
You're right.
But they just finally came in, so that's what I was wondering, is it? If previously when we saw it on here was because the money was deposited and this is because the money came out to pay for.
So it's showing a check.
Yeah, showing it. Ten seconds. Um, I'll make the motion to accept the. October first to the thirty first, the.
Okay. Then one second. So.
It was.
One question, so it was supposed to be seventy five that came back to me and seventy five definitely from where we got pulled in.
Check one, four, four thousand.
Oh, no, sorry, it's originally.
I'll make a motion to accept the October. October thirty first, uh, salaries for uh, finances. All better. Public reports. Yeah, this.
First off.
He felt, I noticed the phone, second phone. Uh, Donald's phone.
Yeah.
Did we do anything over it? Checking.
I don't think she gave anything down about it, but it's not, that would be something to share with people.
So that's. Or cause it was.
It's all this.
Um, the Exxon three three system is ordered. Should be here sometime between December and middle January. Pay until it gets here, then you. We did get the uh, approval for the liability grant from KLC, so that will take fifteen hundred dollars off the cost of that. We should get that shit. I guess by the end, this type of good days. So yearly or is it on?
Oh, yeah, this one.
And checks a one time check, receiving a liability grant in years. But, um. As of the fifteenth of November, we've had fifteen calls this month. Still getting the parking complaints. You know, that usually only three, so. Still getting them around to the sheriff's office, if I get a call, I'm just gonna interview it. Outside for the fellow area.
It wasn't much on it, I learned it then. Great. Um, run volume, um, this month, or October twenty five, we said number seven eleven. EMS related, uh. Number six, grass burning, power line transformer slash one next category. Service call. The. Ever since been repaired. Got a separate estimate from. Letting.
Everman.
Everman. From everyone, he came within a couple of days. Had repaired it, it was underneath, or it was. Below the level of the, the plane that had already paid to us. Got a board that was nine hundred and twenty dollars. If the other one would.
He was sending a money back.
Which he fits one thing and something else always pops out, so. And I'm told that there is now a water leak on our line from the end of the station. We. I'm tactic plumber who plans to come in. Problem. He thought it was, not that tell me, but the water, the guy who called, he thought that indicated that. Turned out the shut, the water off. Keep the leak from getting more than we. They didn't fill both lines, both us and the neighbor, that it turned off, their network shut off. For each of those, very least, so. It's since been shut off and uh, they're supposed to come tomorrow, I don't know the details of when. We begin a, we don't care this.
Chief, where is that? Because that's the line that comes into the front corner of the building?
That's not understanding.
Because we had that repaired.
Yeah.
Three years ago.
Just that we may not want to use the same people that did it.
Yeah, and maybe the customer may pay for a different route into the building because if it's possible, because obviously that's going to keep breaking. I mean, they did it, they dug up the entire floor and put all that pipe back in, it's all right, yeah. You can go look for the couches are on the front door, I mean, you could see the seam where they cut through there to put that in.
But he mentioned that you had some problems with it at that time.
Yeah. It's just old.
But as far as I know, it's a, it's a lot of money, I have to call special meetings, but probably I have to get it, you know, for myself. We're talking access now, like, we may have to have a special meeting to do that. Just in, I mean. It's, it is what it is, if it's fifty dollars, it's not, you know, special meeting, but we're talking digging up floors and. I have to have a meeting on that, so we can get the water back. Recent fashion, but.
Probably not gonna have the answer to your question until it is dug up, at least the time believed.
Yeah.
Problem is, kind of. Get limited to that certain one dollar amount, in thousand dollars, then we have to approve it.
How differently enjoying the pursuit.
That's not, that's just saying, with that small concerns. How we process this. I know we have a problem, but it seems like we're already. Trying to fix it actively, which is not, it's not a bad thing, I'm not knocking it at all. What scares me is if we get in digging up floors and regoing all kinds of lines to the meter and stuff, we'd be talking five thousand dollars.
I, I agree, I. Then we anticipate.
We usually take estimates before we will bid or whatever, you know, if we bid it, if we're planning it and if we're, you know. I, I just don't know how. I don't know how everybody else feels about it. They're open to giving it to you, I just, that's what scares me.
You mean like getting the estimates and calling a special meeting so they don't have to wait for the next schedule or whatever they get it?
Yeah, I mean, if we get into the, to the point of, I mean, you all use water there quite regularly, right? Bad drains and everything else. Uh, y'all have a fire suppression system that I can do it.
No. Tony, you had, you know, and you had, and you're right, but you got one, I don't know. Long story, free group.
Yeah, that's nothing. It's gonna be hard to do, but.
I understand.
That's, that's the only thing scared me, I want to get it done, is what I'm trying to say. And if we can do it today, you're right, that'd be great, but. I know, that's another thing, it's not on the agenda.
So. Did you obviously notice it leaking or?
I, I was just maybe.
Because I'm trying to see if the Georgetown Water Bill out, see.
I look forward to it, it's, there's a GM ask, but I just for the city hall, but I didn't see there.
Yeah.
I look myself.
Because it's a lot of reefer now.
He, he was told that it was leaking a gallon of mint.
Oh, my.
I will probably have to ask for an adjustment, that's true. It's a lot, yeah.
I haven't seen the bill, I haven't, I don't know who discovered it, actually, if it was the neighbor or if it was. The water company, based on some other assessments they were making, I'm going to read the meter.
So they saw it out in the meter basin, so get back to.
Well, might I suggest that. He makes a motion to. October, just that on October's water bill for five hundred and one forty two dollars.
So maybe it's a, maybe it's a newer leak, maybe you caught it in time, hopefully.
There is a typo on that.
There's a typo in my description, I'll have to fix it in QuickBooks.
Oh, okay, okay.
My suggestion to authorize, whatever dollar given you think is acceptable, because.
Yeah.
He's probably not even gonna give me an estimate.
And.
It's because of special meeting, I have all special meetings.
Well, we keep saying special meeting, this is an emergency, this is a water, this is the sewer and stuff, but it could be an emergency call, couldn't it? Where she, the mayor could call it, make them vote on it when we get to do it.
They're gonna. Right. Yeah, that's why I was looking if it has fire, uh, fire suppression, yeah, there's a no brainer.
Yeah, so if you get the estimate, you give it to the mayor and she can call, if it's about what you can spend on your own.
Yeah.
Mercy and whoever gets here to vote, well, he's, I guess two, or three, you'd have to get here to vote, but.
Oh, we can get that.
Yeah, we're just, we're just not doing.
And that, that won't require any notice, we don't have to, she can call it, say, we're gonna meet today is fourth Thursday, which I will. Give you, try to get that in what notice, but it's emergency.
We gotta go first. What is the dollar nothing, it's a thousand on its own.
Yeah, it's a thousand.
If it goes over that and just call the mayor and then we'll do it quick.
And if they're going in the same, if they end up finding the same spot, for some reason my mind keeps thinking they did a, like a sleeve and then ran the water line through it to prevent what happened last time, the settling of the, the foundation. So maybe they'll dig in there, it won't be as bad as we think, they did do the sleeve, I'm trying to think, they did that and they ran actual Exxon verse through there. Perfect. I think what you got is a priority, expand up to the town. Right, yeah. If it looks like it's going to exceed that, then the mayor could call emergency meeting. Which essentially would be just to address the emergency and something you have to identify the emergency clients. Round up commissioners and call the newspaper and tell them, but don't have to wait twenty four hours to.
Thank you.
So my next call, I can, I mean, information will be to you.
That, that goes over in town.
Yeah.
That's completion of the point, and I'm sure some other important.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Public reports. I may still. Um, a few things, uh, guys had asked me to look into the flagpole line, it's gonna be about two hundred dollars. Um, which I believe I'm approved for, so there's no objections over there and did that.
I'll go to you.
Wait, I want nothing.
So did you not approve?
Okay, so let it be known that Tony said no, I'm giving it. Um.
He said, oh, no, too.
Um, so that, um. I still owe you information for the RFP for the laying the bricks down here.
Yeah.
I'll get that to you by the end of this coming.
Okay.
And then we can do an RFP for that.
Perfect.
Um, I do have a question though, because are we saying, are we really saying no to the lock, like there's nowhere else that that could be pulled from, because I mean.
Well, because I have a budget, you can't pull from, that's why I ask, you have money for budget.
Do we have money in any where that could?
If not, then we have to decide where it comes from. That's the only reason I was saying.
I'm gonna say it, I just, people are, people are gonna stop down and.
And the thing is, we, we budget so tight, probably, and it's not, we really can't discuss it tonight, but probably we do, since we had a little bit of overage. Maybe go back and then budget two thousand in each department because of that overage, and that way when things like this come up or you need to something, it'll be there, don't worry about where it's coming from. It's just because we did some restricted budget.
Um. If you're on him, I'm gonna go ahead, that wasn't my budget.
Okay.
Nice, I'm gonna go ahead and tell him to come do that. Um. Back here for the back door. So, it's the thing, the problem and stuff like that. Um, as far as December's thirteen with the parade and all that stuff, I have. Two bones. So we depend on every single pole that we have in town.
Oh, nice.
Okay, and then I thought that would look really good with your banners. Since we can't put lights on or anything, so I'll be asking for some help for that. Um. We took on the task of. Setting this up for seeing when he's here. So we've got, uh, all the decorations, this with all that stuff is over there. Um, we've got trees, you can tell. And, um. Basically, what we're thinking about when we come through the door here. It's a little nice round back there. It's gonna be a nice path to catch you around to seeing the, you know, Santos kind of reset up and a really nice old chair right here. With a big backdrop behind it, that looks like Santa Toy Shop, and then, uh, we'll have trees, snow, red carpet, all the words. That's all it's like, so I've also got some wreaths for out here for the market, holiday market. And I've got all these stuff.
The, what do you call it, the pillars of rock?
Oh, the two big pillars that when you walk in doors, yeah. And then I've got all the poles and stuff to screen all the lights and the cable and everything, the, for that whole bit back here. So.
We're also.
I'll be asking for all kinds of help and all that stuff. But, um, anyway, so that's all, I think we're.
We're doing hot topics here.
I've got, uh, I've got all the gift cards for the, uh, well, three different prizes for the. Books, and I've got all the gift cards for the two different prizes for the house committee.
And that was People's Bank.
People's Bank, uh, they, originally they were giving us five hundred and then they actually increased it to a thousand, which made our, uh, decoration budget go up a little bit, so.
The city's not sponsoring that. And commissioners, that they're out of the two? Maybe the diver house.
I've been, I've been. I'm gonna do a Facebook post, probably, probably this weekend. And I ask anybody that wants to be part of the house littering comp, they'll be, give me their address. Um, but it will be for anybody in St. Gregory, that's the four oh two seven line, so not just in Menchur.
Oh, and in the four oh two seven, so I found that, that's good. Well. So I have. Uh, streets.
Um, hmm, banners are hung, the five locks have been painted. I talked to Wiley and he's working on the flagpole holders. Um, he said that it will take just a little bit longer, because I asked for the powder coat then, and he said that they can, so they're gonna do that, and then also, he said. I asked about a screw to help hold the pole in, and he said that it, again, will take a little bit longer, because they had to hand thread them, but they can do it, so. There's that, and then hopefully here soon, the, uh, street signs will go up. That's all I got, I think.
Well, the lines look good.
They what?
Well, the lines look good.
Yeah, they did, they did a good job.
Um. You can help with that, that's me, so phase one, parking lot, if y'all ever notice, is commenced. Well, we might actually be in phase two, they've already demoed and they've already poured concrete out there on phase one or phase two, according to that. With the new added dog notice, takes about a look. Other than that, I really, um, really want to have anything.
They're paying the store parking lot. Let me ask some U N S.
She hasn't, geez, I, I can't talk. She, she, she's really close. Uh, really, really, really close.
Definitely sounds like partners.
Yeah, I, she's going, she's over there, so I will announce when she's ready.
And one more thing, I forgot. Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I'll talk about water bills. So we had an ordinance back in July to reduce the rate on the water. Um, somehow I know we're that ordinance never made it to the water company. So, uh, the rates for cleaning monies that basically happen, alright. Um, so my question for everybody, because I don't know, is who's responsible for getting that over there, whenever it's something like that. Uh, that's part one, so part two, as of the next billing in November, that rate will be changed. Um, and. We're going to, uh, do a back then for the last three months I work. So we've been losing about a thousand dollars a month.
So was that implemented on them by the water company to us, or did we implement it to the water company?
For the ordinance?
Yes.
Now that was our, we voted on here.
So why would we back pay them?
We're not.
Okay.
They're gonna pull that down, citizens. This is gonna be about six dollars or something for a bill. Which is gonna be about six dollar region, something for a bill. So we should write some of the equations. They have it.
Was it published, do you know?
Yeah, I think it was published.
I mean, it's. It's just a pretty correct, I don't.
If they don't have, how does that usually work?
Well, actually, it's a sending to notify the water company, but they're just billing service. They're doing a job for the city, which is something that we, uh, change and, well, we're charging.
Okay. Probably our fault, we probably didn't think to ask Michelle to send it on, so.
Well, we don't suck, we don't have the water.
No, no, that's on.
So that's their service.
It's on the water bill. We're talking for trash.
Oh, I thought you were talking, okay, we're like that.
This is drunk.
Two dollars, I was gonna say, okay, so we're talking like trash, I got it.
The property is on.
I was so going to use the water, I was like, that's not, I've got figured it out.
Yeah. Uh, so anyways, uh, for next, the next cycle, which is November twenty-fourth, that will be right side.
Right, that's right.
Uh, we've got finance and administration.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we approved a lot of stuff for her, um. Uh, you know, that'd be, okay. So I guess at this time, uh.
Could we do the parking lot first, because.
We can.
Think we have to turn this up.
Can I get her to interrupt here for a minute?
Yes.
I'm really confused, so that driver please run to me.
She can't talk.
Can't talk.
I'm trying to get her.
Somebody told.
Yeah.
That's.
I'm sorry. She keeps pointing at me and telling me to say that, I say.
Joe, in her defense, I can hear when she's talking to them, even I can't understand.
Um, you know, when you pass on to the mayor, ask her if we can skip and do the survey first, because executives actually might have to turn that off and.
That's fine, uh, let's, let's skip to, we all fine with that? Okay, we'll do the parking lot survey. Uh, this is just a, um, kind of a topic that, uh, we all agreed upon to have the rear parking lot survey directed behind City Hall. Mister Heath, um, come through. Um, five hundred dollar bill, so it's cheaper than what we initially quoted, so we are, play this. Yes.
It's on its way.
So it's not fifteen hundred dollars, we'll be budgeted, but, um, I sent you all a copy of it on via email. Um, one thing I want to point out to you, um. You know, it doesn't say a, a easement on here, uh, the, of the property back there. Um, it shows that four foot, four foot, you know, both, which is an easement, you know, that driveway. But, um, I know that we were, me and Ken were tasked to do the parking lots, this parking lot's going, so I'm gonna turn it. I did, at my half, got it surveyed and, and let's work together. Whatever we need to do down here, if you wanna do anything, or if the commission doesn't wanna do anything down there, um, we do on the property. We may, now listen on, on their deed, their property, um, states there is an egress, degress right there.
Yeah.
Ours does not say that.
Yeah.
Don't know why. Um, if nothing else, cannot fight that, we could always just move it down a little bit and have our own entrance that we don't share. And we don't have to maintain and get used every day. Um, but that's for us to discuss, we do have an egress, degress. A hundred percent sure, but we would have to let our attorneys validate that. But, um, kinda, I'm just getting back with you, this is what was requested, we got it done, but, um, Zach, this is his name, so he. There it is, what is our intentions, man? Moving forward.
It's something that.
I, I definitely would think that we'd use it for the holiday market, we may not get nothing back there, but we have it.
You know, if there's lighting there, you're talking about for parking or set up? Cause it'd be a perfect place to set people up, they're not walking through the street.
One thing I will, um, I had talked to Commissioner Brown a while back, is that I think she has some signs that would make no parking on this point. Those are marked out there right now. Probably need me and you or whoever just go back there and say, you know, just out of respect for them, not to block the road or park pass this point.
I was gonna say, I do have a do not block drive.
Yeah, that would be better. Um, but at least put those signs up and. Whatever y'all didn't wanna mitigate or push or do, I'm, we're here, it's done, validated. And paid for, so. I'm open for suggestions and we can table it till the next meeting.
I'm, I'm thinking here, stuff we've done and we've got in the works already, you know, if you're talking about like dropping rock and things like that, you know. Would it not be better maybe to work till, wait till midpoint of budget, six months in, see what we got before we get into all that?
Yeah, I have no problem with that. Um, it was just brought to my attention, you know, some of us wanted to put gravel back there. Cause originally we were doing gravel there, we was like, we just do that one and that, right? This one's a little bit more expensive than we thought, hopefully lasts longer. If we, if we wanna table this and just sit on this, we know that we have it, just know that the, like, we put our signs up. And then we use it, use it for the market or whatever we need to do, um, just.
You'd think that it could also be used the way that this one has, I mean, we may not be doing anything with it, but we've driven through it, there's nothing that's gonna, I mean, other than that's bush and it's, it eventually has to.
Well, I think that was, that's, but I think the bush needs to go on our side.
Um, some things to think about too, if we start letting cars go up in there. I don't know the last time that, um, they tilled up there, but those bamboo shoots, when you was cutting them, they would go through a tire. And so we need to make sure that's not a fair for damaged vehicles, but the other, my other concern is, why maybe wait until mid-year? Because we really need to get looked at, cause there's two issues, there's sewer water goes underneath that piece of property. And there's a huge drain tile, you know, where it drains right there at the corner of Buffalo Springs and, we're like that tile, but then it comes out right behind the fire parts, that's a huge drain underneath there. So we need to make sure we don't do anything to damage that underneath there.
I, um, I definitely think that we need to like. Put the signs up and then maybe even, I don't know, if we put up a public parking behind or get your own risk, you know, for like when big events happen that can park in there.
Well, and I was taking some to it, that'd probably be a great idea, if something happens, they back into the wall and tear the car up and.
Eventually, you might wanna put something up so that you can't get that close to it, cause I'd hate to see that wall go.
Yeah.
It's hit like three different other places going up through there, leaving the crap.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate.
So yeah, it should have, I should, cause I believe whenever I bought the street signs, I, I bought for both.
Yeah, I think we can get them.
No, there could be another park at your own risk sign for that, as well as I had a do not.
Basically, what I'm telling, um, I, I, I'm kinda like on the point where we table it, we use it for the holiday market, we get the signs up, do some claiming of it. Let it settle, see if this helps our situation, if it doesn't. We have other options. I definitely use it for the holiday market if we can, I'll let them know that they can use it, if we agree upon.
And we're gonna use it for parking or for setting up?
Well, whatever.
Whatever they play for.
Whatever they play for, stop the time I live. I'm just gonna say it's available.
There's some light back there.
So you have the big light that is directly above the, the bathrooms there, and it kinda does.
Somewhat.
Somewhat, there's a tree there. It somewhat does, both sides.
But you know, if we make that down the road, if we do rock it in, maybe look, you get a cave, put a pole and put on a light, just to light it up.
Well, I mean, we already have a pole back there.
I was wondering.
Well, it doesn't shine that way, but we have two, one points at the flag, I don't even know if it's working. I can do, I can do a little bit of it, but anyway, it's just, what, what is the intention of the commission? I say table it.
That is what I was gonna say.
Table it within tenth of putting signs up. We have it. You understood, you like that idea? Do we need a motion or just drop it?
No, I, I would just drop it and bark, cause we're in, that's me, parking lot survey, kind of.
Understood. Alrighty. You wanna say, for Joe gets on my end?
My question, my succession session.
I heard. And I'll help if the commission is ready, there would be a motion, go into exempt in session. Some K R S sixty-one point eight ten one F, discussions which might lead to the appointment of the employee.
Make a motion.
Second.
You have a second? All favor.